I would like to call the April fifteenth, 2021 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:02 PM. If you will all stand please, Karen Holland will have our invitation.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray that you be with us as we finish out the school year. Hope our seniors as they continue to move forward to graduate. Hope all of our other students as they work through to progress to the next year. Be with our staff and administrators as we close out the year strong. Hope those in need as well, Lord, and be with us with all the decisions we made. In your name I pray, amen.
You will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Life by His Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Ms. Chair.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye aye.
The motion carries, five oh. All right, we have recognitions, student recognitions, and those will be made by Miss Destiny
Good evening. Tonight I would like to introduce you to Emmy Youngblood and Beau Tate. Both of these students, along with several others, entered their original stories into the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition. First, their stories were judged locally, and then local winners moved on to regional competition for our RESA Region Two area. The purpose of the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition is to encourage students to develop enthusiasm and expertise in their writing, to provide a context to celebrate their writing successes, and to recognize student achievement in arts and academics. This prestigious competition has been engaging Georgia students for more than two decades and is open to any student currently enrolled in Georgia Public Schools, grades K-12. Emmy wrote a story titled "The Pet Store" and won first place for all second grade in the region. Her story was about visiting the pet store with her daddy. She considered all of the details of cats, dogs, and fish before finally choosing to buy the puppy with the caramel-colored fur. She named him Caramel. So if you're trying to decide on a pet for your family, Emmy can definitely help you choose. Beau's story was titled "The Tranquil Invasion of Russia." He won first place for all fourth grade in the region. His story is written from the perspective of a sixteen-year-old soldier whose father was a drill sergeant. The soldier endures intensive training, fighting on the front lines, and is eventually knocked out by a cannon shot. In fact, the final shot caused him to slip into a coma. The brave young man awakens in a hospital with a nurse letting him know the army retreated. In the end, the tranquants looked forward to never being tormented by the Russian barbarians again. As a local judge, I must say that all of our writers did a wonderful job. Both Emmy and Beau did an outstanding job of demonstrating their exceptional talent and creativity in writing. Congratulations Emmy Youngblood and Beau Tate on this outstanding achievement and being named a Region Two North Georgia RESA winner for the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition for 2020-2021. So Emmy and Beau, if you will come forward. I have a certificate.
(applause)
And if they're teachers or administrators you hear and they've got to come up and stand with them, they're welcome too. So take your hands off. Let's get them out of the way. Congratulations, you guys.
I love their stories too.
I know it. I'm so impressed.
Awesome. Thank you, congratulations.
(applause)
We did have copies of their stories.
I would like copies of them.
Yeah, they're excellent. Excellent work.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to have PHS band working missions, Mr. Young, if you will please. And we are, we are holding to our COVID restrictions in and out, that sort of thing.
Hi, y'all.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. It was nice, beautiful outside, perfect. Uh, do you want to...
Yeah, we'll go.
Okay.
Don't call me a guy.
Good to see everybody headed over.
Come on in, folks, we won't bite.
Students come on over here against the wall, that'd be best. Parents can sit wherever they want. Parents, yeah, parents go wherever y'all want. Students, against the wall, there we go. Every year, the Pickens High School Band has many students audition for the district honor band for the Georgia Music Association group and for a chance at All-State Band. The state is divided into districts, and our district includes Forsyth, Cherokee, Pickens, Gilmer, Fannin, Dawson, Lumpkin, Towns, Union, and White Counties. We had fifteen students audition at first-round auditions held in January. It was a virtual audition this year, they can't do it in person. So we did a virtual audition, they had to submit three different files, and then they were sent to me, and then we sent them out to band directors, and it was quite the process this year. And then they had to do that at the state level as well. We had, like I said, we had fifteen audition at the first round, and eight advanced to the final round All-State Auditions, also virtually, and those held in February. To advance to the second round, you have to achieve a minimum score. For some instruments, it's seventy-five, some instruments it's eighty, some instruments it's eighty-five, but you have to achieve a minimum score set by the state to do that. Over seven hundred and fifty students auditioned at our district level. These students are, let me go and call your name, and why don't you guys just come across right over here and just wait, and then somebody will be coming back and forth, because most of you will be coming back and forth. Piper Duncan, oboe. Mary Forrester, trombone. Eli Galligan, horn. Owen Galligan, percussion. Luis Gonzalez, trombone. Jerry Knight, clarinet. Levi Kuiper, clarinet. And Connor Williams, tuba. So these students were recognized, as I said, for advancing to the second round auditions. And from those lists, what they do is that they pick students to be placed into our district honor bands. The results come out shortly after that for the first round auditions. We had another great year. Eight students were selected for this, and I'll actually, I'm going to call you up again for yet another one. Okay, so with the eleven-twelve honor band, Piper Duncan was selected for that. Seth Dinsmore, who's not here, I believe they have a baseball game tonight, or he has baseball practice, I know it's one of the two. Eli Galligan, horn. Owen Galligan, percussion. Connor Williams, tuba. And Bailey Gaddis on clarinet. And then with the nine-ten honor band, we had Levi Kuiper on clarinet, Jerry Knight on clarinet, and Mary Forrester on trombone. This was held at Fannin County High School, they allowed us to use two of their gyms. They separated the bands into two large groups, and we made it work, we socially distanced, we had masks and bell coverings and all kinds of stuff like that. And then they did, they rehearsed for five hours and then put on a full concert. It was pretty impressive. And finally, we had two students selected for the All-State Band. Over twelve hundred students tried out for the All-State Band, and two of ours were selected. They will participate in a virtual All-State Clinic tomorrow. It's sad that they can't be in person in Athens, but it's usually held at the Classic Center, and there's limitations on how many they can get on the stage. I believe there's eleven performing groups, and Classic Center pretty much said, no, that's not happening. So they're doing a virtual All-State Clinic where they've got a keynote speaker who's one of the best in our business, and then they've got clinics and workshops and things like that that they're going to participate in tomorrow virtually. And the students that were selected were Eli Galligan, horn, remind me what chair it was, was it sixth chair? Sixth chair in the All-State. And Mary Forrester, trombone, second-chair trombone in the state. So congratulations to both of them and all of these students.[656.04][656.04](applause) We appreciate the time to recognize everybody, and if y'all want to do a picture as parents, by all means, please do.
Y'all want to get together, like you like each other? There you go. Awesome.
That's good.
Perfect. One for me over here. One, two, there we go, thank you.
Mr. Young, we need you in there.
There, sir, okay, talk over there as well.
Lay down in front.
No, I am not that coach.[695.13][695.13](laughter) Yeah, I saw Coach Neering did that the other day with the golf team, that was hysterical. All right, thanks, guys, appreciate you coming.[719.13][719.13](applause)
Good job, good job. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time. Everybody, you got to go.
All right, and next we'll have, once that group leaves, we'll have Chris Williams, our athletic director, will be recognizing the PHS Varsity Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Did you not hear me?
Uh.
Okay. They were fussing at me earlier because I was too loud.[753.44][753.44](laughing) Okay, we will have Chris Williams, our athletic director, be recognizing the PHS Varsity Boys and Girls Cross-Country Teams.
There's a button.
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
Yes, have a look here and check the, check the, yes. Superintendent Young, Madam Chair, members of board, thank you for this opportunity to come back before you again this month and celebrate some of our student athletes at Pickens High School. It's always an honor to do so, and as I said before, this is the best part of my job. And we're very fortunate to be able to do so. Tonight, we're going to talk about or recognize our cross-country teams. First, I thought we would go with our girls, our female team coached by Ms. Kenna Lutz to my left. These young ladies, I watched struggle through the summer, all the COVID issues that were going on, and they were really, if you'll have it, our, the cross-country teams kind of our guinea pigs this summer, if you'll have it with all the monitoring and the temperature checks and all those things that was having to go on, and did a great job of that. Had a couple setbacks and that hindered the training, but were able to get back as soon as possible. Very proud of these young ladies. I would dare say, or challenge anybody to say that a student at Pickens High School cannot be involved in several different athletics and still have good grades and be some of our best students, because you're looking at products, just like with our basketball team last month we were talking about. I truly believe that athletics helps these students develop a work ethic that carries over into the classroom. This year, we had some, they were a fairly young team, had a few seniors, they're a fairly young team, and did a great job. They finished fourth in our area or in our region, seventh, Quad Eight, and then I was fortunate enough to be able to go down to Carrollton. I'd never experienced this before, but the state track meet, or the state cross-country meet, where they have every classification on the campus over a several-day period, and it's almost like going on to a college campus on a game day. Almost looked like everybody was tailgating, but it wasn't tailgating, it was a bunch of tents trying to keep the kids cooled down, but everybody was real nice, everybody had their own school colors flying, and I was glad to be able to be down there. But they rallied and was able to finish in the top ten, matter of fact, finished eighth in the state in Quad Eight, and they really, they really did a great job. We have one young lady that we'd like to mention, Ms. Becca Weiss, is a freshman, came on real strong, and from my understanding, according to Coach Lutz, she has the fastest 5K time for a freshman in Pickens High School history with a score, with a time of twenty-one minutes and thirty-eight seconds. So we're very proud of her, and she's got three more years to go, and hopefully will lead this team on to bigger, better things. But we are very fortunate, again, that they were able to show up. Thank you, parents, for the sacrifice, getting kids where they're supposed to be on time and all these things, especially in the summer, dealing with all the COVID issues that we had. We greatly appreciate your efforts there. But this is our 2021 edition, or 2020 edition of our girls' cross-country team at Pickens High School. Let's give them a hand.[1041.58][1041.58](applause)
Congratulations, please.
Yeah, we'll act like we like each other. Don't tell me I should act. We might have in this crowd.
We'd have to get him back up if he says he can't. He just thinks we're serious.
All right, so you have pictures you need? All right, thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Oh, I don't know the bump, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I have my vaccine. Congratulations.
Ladies, ladies want to be exited?
Congratulations. One of my favorite teachers. Somebody you're beside you.
Don't tell him that. All right, next we have our boys' team, and again, this is a group who met at the same time all summer long with the girls over at Roca Park. Coach White, Coach Lutz were there most of the time, they were participating with them as well. Even though they met early in the morning, it was still hot, very hot, especially in the middle of July and before school started, and you would see the amount of effort and work that they put in. The boys' team, a little more seasoned, I guess you'll have it, a little more experienced, and will share some of the things that they've accomplished over the past several years. The boys have been region champions, depending on which classification, which region we were in, four of the last five years, and ten out of the last twelve years. So that's a big.[1163.58][1163.58](applause) Our boys' team has produced seven of the last eight individual region cross-country champions as well. So I can assure you, when I talk to other athletic directors, whether it be in our area or in other classifications, they know about our boys' cross-country team and the work ethic and the program that Coach White has put together. I believe he's done a tremendous job. He has invested in these kids and is definitely dedicated to what he's doing. We will recognize at this time Seth White. He has been the region champ for the last two years, two consecutive years, and then we had four of our runners took four of the five top spots in our region meet, so we're very, very pleased with the outcome there. Again, I was able to go to Carrollton and watch the state meet, and I didn't quite know how things were going to shake out, so they kind of had me worried. I'd never been to the state meet before, but they really turned it on and did what they needed to do. They ended up finishing third in the state, and we're very proud of that. Seth was the highest-place finisher for us in the state at fifth. And not only that accomplishment, but since then, working in track, I'll go ahead and mention this, he has the Pickens High School record in the mile and also the eight-hundred, sixteen-hundred and the eight-hundred, and I believe he's trying to shave a few more tents down maybe, and if he does that, that's going to open up a whole new world to this young man when it comes to those recruiters come around. So we're very thankful for the job that Coach White has done, we're very proud of these young men and their accomplishments, and the only problem with winning, and winning consistently, is it becomes an expectation.[1286.65][1286.65](laughter) So, next fall, we're expecting great things, and again, this, whether it be the girls' team or the boys' team, this group of parents that is here with us today have done a tremendous job. They are constantly, especially in the hot parts of the season, are taking care of the hydration needs and the nutritional needs of these kids while we're out. We always have a, assume to have a large contingency of Pickens folks at these meets, and we're very proud of the parents as well. Thank you, parents, for the shuttling and getting to where they're supposed to be on time and making sure these kids don't get in trouble with Coach White, you know, for being late, so we definitely appreciate that. But this is our boys' cross-country team, and we'll just give them a round of applause at this time.[1338.71][1338.71](applause)
We like to have the coaches in the picture, too.
I hear their coach real well. That's my old classmate. Act like you like each other.
Right? Oh, they like each other. There you go.
Anytime that these guys are at a meet, or anytime they had the opportunity, I guess you'd have a photo of, this is how you saw them.
Yeah.
I mean, they're a very close-knit group, I guess you have to be when you're sitting there running and about to kill over dead with the next guy you're running beside all summer long.[1394.41][1394.41](laughter) Continue to get, continue to get pretty close. All right, Jim, if you will, please turn and shake hands with the board members.
Excuse your inexperience. Congratulations, thanks for having us.
That's great.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. Congratulations, please.
Madam Chair, thank you so much for this opportunity, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you so much, what a terrific program this is, we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
All right. Once everybody gets settled, we'll have our superintendent reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first report of the evening will be from our CFO, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Martha, just a minute to pull up the financial report. Our general fund summary, our FY21 general fund revenue collected through March 2021 is eighty point one-three percent, and expenditures are at sixty-one point seven zero percent of the amended budget. Just always remind you, at this time of year, don't get too excited about those expenditures being very low at this point. In the month of June, we actually issued three months' worth of paychecks for most of our staff. So June, we issue June, July, and August, which covers the summer, so that month is very, very expensive, so don't get too excited about that number being low. Will you pull up the one-fifty, please? Last month, if you remember, we amended the budget to create a new fund, and it's called Consolidation of Funds, affectionately called Fund One-Fifty. It is taking part of our federal revenue and part of our state revenue and blending it into a consolidation fund that allows more flexibility specifically at the school level. The principal, I think, had been very excited about this, but I will now be presenting this report also, just so you know where we are. In yellow, do not get concerned that that is a negative, or that number is over a hundred percent. At the end of each month, there is an approval, a review and approval process where we actually have to review all the expenditures for the month. It goes through three of our staff members, and then we do a transfer actually back into the federal money. So until that transfer is done, with spring break, it delayed us a little bit, but that process is a little tedious, it has to be correct, so it may take a week to two weeks, and if there's an issue, it could take three. So when I present to the board, that is probably going to be over a hundred percent each month. At year-end, it will all zero out, all federal monies will go into federal, and there will be a state revenue transfer that will zero that one-fifty fund out. So I still have to present it just so you can see it, since we did create that fund. And next, we'll go to capital projects and SPOLOST. SPOLOST revenue for March was four hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and fifty-six cents. We did a transfer from general fund, we received a donation that was specific for a SPOLOST project that we had already completed, but because we use SPOLOST funds, that donation was for the baseball project at the high school, so we still have to make, put that twenty-five thousand dollar donation into SPOLOST funds, so that the intent was SPOLOST, so we must put the money, it must follow the project, even though the project is complete.
Was it the first?
It was the second, second donation from the Dunn family. Interest earned for the month was two thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety cents. Expenditures totaled thirty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents, and the month's SPOLOST balance was eight million, three hundred thirty thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents. As always, I'd like to report we have no debt. The final report that, well, I'll pull up, is the School Activity Quarterly Report, and we are required to present this every quarter. Each school has their own internal account, it is under the same guidelines that any account at the central office is, so our general fund and those accounts follow the same rules, but we have to present the beginning balance, the receipts for that quarter, the expenditures for the quarter, and the ending balance. So that is for your review, and if y'all have any questions. Audit has been with us the past three or four weeks, most of it has been virtual or digital. They did come on-site two different times, three of them for one day and one for another day. Everything, they're finishing up their due diligence, we have completed all our portions, so we should have something probably in six to eight weeks from them, so we'll just keep y'all updated as those reports come in. Everything seemed to be, everything was good, we don't know of anything that they had any problems with. So if y'all have no questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Emmy. Our next report will be from our Chief Operations Officer, Stacey Gillen. Spring break was a good thing for our maintenance department, we've got some things down that we've been wanting to take care of, some AC units, we took the cooling tower at the high school part, which, if you don't know what a cooling tower is, it's the main part of the cooling.
Everything seemed to be, everything was good. We don't know of anything that they had any problems with. So if y'all have no questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Amy. Our next report will be from our chief operations officer, Stacey Dillon.
Spring break was a good thing, if I remember correctly. We got some things down that we do want to take care of. Some AC units, we took the cooling tower at the high school part, which if you don't know what a cooling tower is, it's the main part of the cooling system. But we cleaned it, detailed it out. It's 23 years old. It's kind of hard to clean something that old, but it's getting there. It's ready to be upgraded. We've been dressing up all our playgrounds. We could put a ton of mulch out all over our playgrounds. It washed it all away during all that rain. So now we're back at it, straightening it back up, fixing it, repairing all our equipment. Now we'll get ready for the kids to hit the playgrounds hard, which they already have. We're trying to make them as safe as possible. We're starting to prepare all areas for graduation, all our grounds, our fields, and probably the gymnasium, too, to have a say in it. So we're starting to get ready to do all that, working with Mr. Wallace and his group to get ready for graduation. Transportation has a training class for April 19th to the 23rd. Looks like we have two or three people, and we're going to look like we're going to pick up two from the last one. So they're just, they're doing a drive-through time now, so that's great. We're getting ready for our annual state bus inspection. The DOT comes out and inspects every bus, the state patrol. It's a tedious thing. It's an important thing, and we always get ready for you for that. We've got a great staff. And with your help and being able to get new buses every year, we're on a 10-year-old fleet now. And every bus that goes on the road every day is air-conditioned, so kudos to y'all for that. Food service. Beth was, wanted to let you know that we're still under the waivers to USDA, so everyone is eating free that are 18 years old or younger. Well, what no decision from USDA was this going to go away, because they say it will. So when we come back in the fall, kids may end up being children. So when that does, we're going to try to get the word out early, let people know. They'll have to fill out the free and reduce, see how much it is actually paying off. So we're really working to stay on top of that. Even though meals have been free, when COVID hit, we had a lot of charges that were never taken care of before COVID. So we have to try to collect these monies. And I've been talking with Amy. I hope we can use some of this CARES money to take care of that, and Beth can start the year with a zero balance, which is great. It's hard to do in the school system. There's always charges on lunch that carry over year to year. So we're looking good there. Week, May 3rd through Selas is National School Food Service Employee Appreciation Week. And May 17th is School Lunch Hero Day. So go by and see your lunchroom workers, eat lunch with us. But it's good food, really is. Welcome you at any time. Any questions? We did get the signage on Dunn Field. Says Dunn Field, and on the press box, looks really good. They do want to have a dedication later. Mr. Wallace working the details out, probably right at the start of softball season. So we did both groups there to celebrate this and recognize the family.
On transportation, just curiosity. Since I've been on this board, I hear about these training classes. We have a lot of training classes. Do they bear any fruit? Do we ever get any drivers out of those?
You only have two or three people show up or sign up. We're lucky to get one to show up. The last two, we've had a couple show up and sign up. Yeah, you do get one or two, but it seems like by the time we get one or two, we have a couple more resign or retire. It's a... If you ride around the state of Georgia or northeast or the south, you'll see buses sitting in every county with a sign saying bus drivers needed. I don't know why. Used to, bus drivers were the farmers, the people that needed the mid-time day job to get the insurance and that kind of stuff. And you just, we just don't have that in the community like we used to. It's everywhere. And we pay well in Pickens County. We pay our bus drivers well. It's, training is an important part, too, because you just don't need to be on the bus with the kids if you're training.
I guess another concern I have, we don't, I hate to get in a situation where we're training people to go somewhere else. Do you feel like we have some of that going on?
Yeah, that's why we have that bonus thing in place, you know, where if they train and they complete it and they work for us for 90 days, we'll give them a $500 bonus. So we're trying to retain them with things like that. But we don't lose a lot of them like that, no. Not a lot of them at all. I've had one, maybe two drivers since I've been here that I know went to a different system. But they were already drivers before I got here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacey. Madam Chair, my final report, I have to see is just for information for the board on a change in policy that we have upcoming. I wanted to share some information with the board so that they were aware. SB 68, which you're familiar with probably, and some of the audience may be, has created a new statute for public comment period at board meetings. And I wanted to make the board aware of some of the information that's coming out, what we're working forward to. The right to speak at board meetings has not been mandated by law until the passage of SB 68, which becomes effective July 1st of 2021. Our board has already allowed public participation, but it has never been mandated by statute until the passage of this legislation. But with this statute, local boards are now required to provide public comment period during every regular monthly meeting. We are not required, the law did not change the requirement that work sessions do not have to have a public comment section, only the regular monthly meeting. SB 68 also prohibits local boards from requiring more than 24-hour notice as a condition of addressing the board during public comment. And so Bethany and Mr. Landrum have been working on a new policy along with GSBA, and we will have a recommendation to bring to you at next month's board meeting for the 30-day comment period. I just wanted all of you to be aware in case you get any questions about the changes that are coming to our public participation policy. And that concludes my reports, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports Ms. Smith presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Green made that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Are you in favor of...
Yes.
...the motion to approve the financial reports?
I am.
Okay. It's 5-0. Motion is approved unanimously. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
No motion.
I'll say it.
Mr. Holland made the motion. Mr. Gartrell, a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. It's unanimous. The PAR is approved as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the contract with Mountain Education Charter High School as presented? I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, could we have some explanation on this contract for public knowledge and our knowledge, just the general?
Yeah. That is, that's the recurring contract that we signed with Mountain at each year. It's actually, we are delayed due to COVID and everything. It's actually the contract that should have been signed a couple of months earlier. But there have been no changes from previous contracts. It's been vetted by Mr. Landrum. He has looked at it to make sure there have been no changes. And so it's basically the same contract that we use, that we've been signing with them ever since I've lived in the old high school building.
Wasn't the, wasn't the previous contract a long-term contract, and this is annual renewal?
Yes, it's been annually renewing now since we moved into that building, I believe in 2018, or since they moved into that building in 2018. We've been renewing this thing with them.
So it is, it is just not as long-term? I know this language is not, but I guess my question was the original term?
Yeah, the original was a long-term. We started this new contract with them when they moved into the old high school building in 18. And then it's, we've been signing this one each time.
And the money stays the same that I saw now? I guess it's broken up quarterly?
Yes.
So they're still equal $50,000, right?
Yes, it'll be quarterly payments. That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All right, my understanding is that Mr. Holland will be abstaining from this vote since he is an employee of Mountain Education, just to make sure there's no conflict there. All in favor? All right. Four with one abstention. All right, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 11th, 2021 call meeting at 5:00?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Smith and Gartrell. And do I have also to, a motion to approve the minutes from the March 11th, 2021 regular meeting at 6:00?
Point of order.
So they did together? Okay.
I would just, I would restate.
Okay. Just back up? All right.
Or you can restate the motion on the table to include if they're filed with us.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll restate the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 11th, 2021 call meeting at 5:00 and the regular meeting at 6:00?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Gartrell?
I'll say it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? All right, the motion carries unanimously 5-0. All right, the next item is our surplus. The Superintendent Young recommends approval of this agenda item. Pickens Junior High. And Harmony Elementary School's request to surplus the attached list of outdated books and books in poor condition. The Transportation and Maintenance Department's request to surplus several old buses, two cars, and two lawn mowers. All right. And I've been told to spare us the misery, we do not have to itemize those. We can just vote on the lists, right?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus items that are listed in these, in these documents?
I'll give the motion.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Second one, Mr. Gartrell. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries 5-0. All right, the next one, Mr. Young, would you like to address that?
I would, Madam Chair. I would like to make a request to the board for approval of the employee retention bonus pay. At its March 25th, 2021 meeting, State Board of Education approved the Governor's recommended educator bonuses to allow local school districts to provide one-time retention bonuses of $1,000 for full-time and $490 for part-time school-level employees using state allocated Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funds, also known as CARES Act funds. I'm recommending expanding the scope and depth of the Governor's bonus plan by using the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund II, Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act CARES II funds in the following manner. All Pickens County School District employees who were actively employed as of 4/14/21 will receive bonuses of $2,000 to full-time staff with $1,000 funded with the Governor's CARES Act funds and $1,000 funded with the ESSER II CRRS Act funds. Bonuses of $980 will go to 49% staff with $490 funded with the Governor's CARES Act funds and $490 funded with the ESSER II CRRS Act funds. Bonuses for those employees who were not included under the Governor's CARES Act will be paid in the same manner as prescribed by the guidance from the Governor and the Georgia Department of Education and funded with ESSER II CRRS Act funds. All related benefit expenses will be funded through the Governor's CARE Act and ESSER II CRRS Act funds as are allowable under the terms of the grants. Under these grants, substitutes and contractors unfortunately are not eligible for bonus pay. Long before a vaccine became available, the staff of our district were diligently in an unsettling situation to continue to provide our students with all of the services that go into a great education. This has been a difficult year for our employees, and I hope that these bonuses will send a message to our staff that their hard work has not gone unnoticed. I'd like to point out to the board that none of these monies will come from our general fund, from local monies, or from our Sploes. And I would ask for the board's approval of this recommendation.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Young.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation of superintendent for bonuses for our teachers and staff.
I'll take up that motion.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? You can only vote one time, Mr. Smith. All right, it's unanimous 5-0. To approve the request for approval of employee retention bonus pay, very well deserved. And this still does not express our full appreciation to everyone who's worked so hard during this COVID emergency. We're very grateful. All right, next item on the list is board comments. Have anything you would like to say? All right.
I'd just like to say I enjoyed seeing the students, as always, seeing their achievements academically and athletically.
That's the fun part.
That is the fun part, that's the rewarding part. And I'm glad we had the opportunity to give a little something more to our teachers and staff this year.
That's why we're here, is for the students. All right, this usually chatty board says they don't have any comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
I'll say it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right, it's unanimous 5-0. We are adjourned at 6:49 PM. Thank you very much to all of you who have taken your time to come and be with us this evening. Thank you very much and be safe going home.